Good evening, welcome to the April 5th study session. There'll be a minor change in the agenda this evening, though we have three items. I'm going to move the ultraviolet lamp replacement up front. It's about a 10-minute segment, and then we'll get into the other two.
Mike?
Thank you, sir. This is an additional review with the City Commission for replacing the ultraviolet disinfection lights at the treatment plant. This was part of the system that was constructed in 2012. It's in the building that's shown on the picture here, it's seen from Second Street. There are three channels of water that flow through this building before it exits the plant and goes to the Missouri River. And each channel has an ultraviolet disinfection system with some light bulbs in it. And there's 480 light bulbs per channel. And this is kind of a general picture of one rack of eight light bulbs. There's 240 in this group, and then there's another one in line with it, it's another 240. The computer that controls the light bulbs keeps track of the on and off times, and how many hours it's run. And there's a warranty with them for 12,000 hours. And we're starting to approach that with at least a third of the light bulbs are kind of there, and the others are coming along nicely behind it. The Commission expressed interest in seeking ways to reduce the number of light bulb purchases over time. And staff has worked on several of the interrelated factors. Primarily improvements to the trickling filters, which are the round tires you see out there, have created a clearer water entering the system, which means that there are fewer light bulbs on for less time, sort of a thing. And also, we've modified the flow proportioning valves to not all the channels are on all the time. You can direct the water to normal flows in one channel, higher flows into two, and the really high flows go into three. We were also able to reduce the on-off cycles with the light bulbs, which impacts the warranty of the thing by evaluating how we operate at low, low flows typically overnight. But during the early morning and late evening hours, we believe by installing some variable frequency drives onto the pumps that deliver water to the ultraviolet disinfection system, that we can further extend the life of our light bulbs. In general, the E. coli numbers, which is the bacteria that we use to represent disinfection, values are in the 100 to say 10,000 to 20,000 range before they go through the light bulbs. And when they leave our system, it's typically well under 100. During half the year, our requirement is that we have to meet a number of 262 for the average. So it's not that we can turn them back a little bit. We're well within permit, but I would hate to mess with the system by trying to fuss with the controller, because we do a very good job of staying under that.
Is that 100 per milliliter, or what?
It's...
Per 100 milliliter.
Per 100... Oh, per 100 milliliter.
Yes, it's like the number of bacteria colonies per 100 milliliters.
100 milliliter, okay.
Something on that order. It's all wrapped your mind around, so I just go with the number.
Okay.
But it does a very good job of basically knocking the heck out of the bacteria as it goes through the system and it goes into the Missouri River. Another kind of operational plan, since we've really been running on this three-channel system, is by replacing 480 of these light bulbs at one time, we'll have a stockpile of light bulbs that we can use as replacement light bulbs in the other two channels. Fully expect that we'll probably need to buy another group of 480 light bulbs next year. And at that point, our good pricing runs out. We have, when we built the project, we had a five-year guarantee on light bulb prices, which are $125 per light bulb. Once that guaranteed price runs out, there is one manufacturer that makes these, and they're $344 apiece, so it goes up by almost...
Double.
...three.
More than double.
So it's, next year, we may be looking at, so to speak, doubling down on light bulb purchases. There is a warranty time, whether you use it or not, if it's three years old. If you haven't started it by the time, three years after you bought it, then there is no warranty on it. So there's no reason to believe that most of the, it's like a light bulb in your closet, in a box, you bought it in three or four years ago, chances are pretty good it'll work when you put it in there. But every once in a while, there's one that doesn't, a little good reason for it. But for this year, we believe that we have moved forward in the direction the Commission has expressed an interest in moving, improving our efficiency in the operations. Other changes we're making, we should see some results next year, same general timeframe, I suspect. If there are no further questions, our goal is next week we bring you a sole source request with, to purchase the 480 light bulbs for this year from Ray Lenz and Company for $63,369.36.
Is there any questions, Mike?
Quick question. As you said, we've got a three-year warranty, and it starts from the date of purchase. And, you know, every now and then, you do have a light bulb that you have in your closet that you bought five years ago, and you figure out it didn't work, and it may not have worked when you first bought it. So when you get these 480, I know you're not going to use them right away, can you put them all in and say, hey, that's good, within that three years, just to test it, to make sure it's, or is it...
This group, we're going to use all of these?
Oh, you're going to use them right away? Okay, you're not going to store them?
These will get used right away, and then the ones that come out will be used as if something, one of the other ones dies. In the meantime, we'll use that as a replacement light bulb in that environment. And then get another year on them. Next year, I know we're going to be recommending at least one more group of light bulbs.
At what price?
Same price.
Okay.
$25.
Next year.
And we can double down. We can buy another group. But I want to look and see if we've extended the life. Right now, we're kind of thinking we'll use all our light bulbs in five years, which is kind of what our operating plan was when we built the project. But if we can perhaps stretch it to seven or eight years, do you want to invest your money now and hope it works later? I don't know. We'll need to watch some more.
Are we limited on the number of light bulbs we buy at 100 and 1/4 apiece?
No, but it's that three-year thing that gets you. So there's some story.
You ever thought about going into light bulb business, buy a thousand of them, sell them to other cities? Sell them to other cities, you know, for $250 rather than $350?
Yeah, I think that's another, we can't do that.
Okay.
Combined for efficiencies. Is this enough, you have enough in the budget to cover this?
Yes, there's money budgeted in the wastewater's predicted CIP plan for this, but we wanted to bring to the Commission to review it generally, because it was a concern during the CIP process.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
You did good, eight minutes.
Thank you, sir.
For our next agenda item is homeless shelter. Paul?
Mr. Mayor and Commission, Shelter of Hope, Homeless Shelter opened at 716 North Fifth Street in December of 2014. At that time, the determination was made by staff that a homeless shelter similar in nature to a domestic violence shelter, and thereby permitted by Wright and the R-16 zoning district as a homeless shelter, is not called out as a specific use on our table. So we have to find the next closest. The shelter's been in operation since that time. The city has also now been aware for some time that Sister Vicki Perkins with Welcome Central and the Leavenworth Shelter of Hope has been exploring options to build a new building. A couple of locations have been tied to the new operation or have been mentioned regarding it. Sister Vicki has sent a letter to the city requesting consideration of any city-owned property, and specifically inquiring about city property at the South Bush corner of Third and Kyowa Streets. I included some property facts about the area that we can get into a little bit later, should the City Commission elect to further pursue that option. That's how I brought this issue forward, framing it. However, if the City Commission wants to take it further, Sister Vicki and the crowd and ask questions, then that'd be fine. So that's staff's report on the issue.
Okay. Sister Vicki, are you in the crowd? There you are.
Thank you for having us here this evening.
You can sit up here.
Sit up, Greg. Yeah. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
In 2010, the Sisters of Charity met, we meet every six years to kind of set the direction for the next six years. And what came up over and over during that?
Name too. We need to have her name too.
Oh, Linda Martin.
Linda Martin. Sorry. She's keeping track for anybody to talk to.
And, you know, we've been here since 1858, and yet, and we'd had individual sisters working in a lot of places, but we'd never really taken a look at, overall look at the city. And so we started talking to agencies and to people living in poverty, because our work is with people living in poverty. And so we talked to focus groups and individuals. What we wanted to find out, what was the real situation and what was the need? And one of the things in all those conversations we had with lots of people that we heard was that there were a lot of people that moved up here from Wyandotte County or Atchison because of jobs and services and things. Well, in the two years we've been open, and we've talked to over 500 people, we have talked to one person that moved here from Wyandotte County and nobody from Atchison. So I'm not sure those rumors that we heard at the beginning were very accurate. We talked with people who were trying to leave Leavenworth because they couldn't find work and things like that, which are going to happen in any city. It's not easy to be poor, no matter where you are. And there's some, because of transportation and some of the, you know, job situations here, we're not a huge city, there aren't as many jobs, and so people do have a difficult time. We made the decision to open Welcome Central because what we're trying to do there is help people connect to the agencies. I call this a clearinghouse, because what we heard over and over was people did not know where to go, what services were offered where, what hours they were, what they had to take with them. And so that's kind of what we do at Welcome Central. We get them to the services they need. We try to find those things for them. There are many wonderful agencies in Leavenworth doing absolutely phenomenal work, and we get people to that. We don't do a lot of the direct service ourselves. The only direct service we do is if nobody else is doing it. Things like getting IDs, because you have to have an ID if you're going to try to get a job. So we do that and some other things. We also help people fill out forms, like food stamps and can care and disability. If you're stressed out, those are pretty intimidating forms, and so we help with that. Because we don't have to meet set quotas and things, we can take the time to just really sit and talk with people. And often, what we find is what they come in for is not necessarily their greatest need. That comes up over and over. We also provide transportation. We, in the first 19 months we were open, we drove over 32,000 miles, and we only go in Leavenworth and Lansing. And so the need is tremendous there, and I know that you are well aware of that. I'm not telling you anything new. We do a very simple intake form, and one of the things we ask on an intake form is, where do you live? And in the first seven months we were open, we talked with 58 people who were homeless. We knew that there had been attempts for years to start a homeless shelter here. Church after church had talked about it and tried to do it. But the two things that seemed to hold them up were, one, how many homeless are there? What are we talking about here? And nobody seemed to have a grasp on that. And then the second thing was the size of the task. It's an enormous thing to take on. And so in September of 2014, about 20 churches came together and some agencies to look at this and to try to talk about starting a homeless shelter. Because we could quantify the number of homeless, and because we worked together, we were able to open in December of 2014, December 15th, we opened the homeless shelter. And it has been open every day, every night since then. Seventy percent of our guests stay less than 10 nights. Thirty percent of them have stayed one night. These are people who are either passing through town, or who just for one night have to have someplace to stay. Another 40% have stayed two to 10 nights. These are people who have lost their homes, are looking, but it takes some time to find. And so these people have only stayed less than 10 nights, often, or shouldn't say often, but several times. It's been families that have lost something, and they have to find, you know, they're really working at finding something. Most of our guests are men, about 70% of them are men. The others are women and families. Our youngest guest at the shelter has been six months, and our oldest has been 74 years. So they span the gamut. We are very excited that many of those people, you know, of that 70%, have been able to move on to stable housing. Catholic Charities has served a huge need there in helping them find that, and I think you all helped fund that program that helps them find other housing that can help. It's very hard if you're working a minimum-paid job to get first month's rent and deposit. And so Catholic Charities has been able to help with that and get some people into housing. And that is exciting for us. It's exciting for us to see the people have gotten jobs and are able then, after a period of time, to move into their own homes, which is what they're looking for. The mission of the shelter is simply a safe place to sleep. We don't serve meals or any of that, it's just providing a safe place to sleep. We recognized very early on that there was a need for a day center. You know, the people who are there, if they don't have jobs, or if their job is later in the day, they have to go someplace during the day. And many of them come down to Welcome Central, but we're not open on weekends, and we're not open on holidays. And so that's difficult for them. We like the fact that many of them have found housing and found employment, and that a lot of people have helped to make that happen. But the people who need the shelter to sleep also need something during the day. And Welcome Central's kind of become that for them, but that's not really what Welcome Central is about, and we know, and the fact that we're not open all the time. The Riverfront has been wonderful, Riverfront Community Center's been wonderful, helping us with showers, because we don't have those at the shelter. And so what we do is we go down and buy punch pass, and when somebody wants to go take a shower, they tell us, we call down and give them the name. When they go down, the Riverfront punches the punch card. It's not perfect, but it's better than nothing, for sure. Laundry is a huge issue for them. It's real hard to go to a job interview when you haven't washed your clothes in a month. So that's another thing we know we need. We need a site where we can put the shelter, a day center, and Welcome Central in one building. When this happens, we hope that then Welcome Central can do what we originally planned to do, and that was help people move out of poverty, as well as get to some of the services that they're looking for. When we're serving kind of as a day shelter, it's almost impossible for us to do that part. We've looked at a number of buildings, but we haven't found anything. We know we have to have everything on first floor. Right now, the shelter is not handicapped accessible, and that's been problematic. It also, the volunteers do the laundry. The shelter's on second floor, the laundry's in the basement. So folks are moving up and down the stairs multiple times during their three-hour shift to do the laundry. We also know we need to be out of the actual downtown area. We recognize that businesses don't want people carrying backpacks and bedrolls down, you know, around the city. We understand that. We also know the homeless need a safe place to be. And so we know that accommodations need to be in the northeast quadrant, because that's where folks are, both the folks that come to Welcome Central and most of the homeless. We've decided that we'd be better off to look for land and then build. We checked with zoning and codes and planning in the city, and they've told us all the things that we need to be sure we do, and we will guarantee that we will meet those criteria, et cetera. We hope to put up like a Butler-type building, a metal building. They've told us what kind of facade has to go on the front, so it doesn't look like a metal building. We know that we need that day center. Right now, it's really very difficult for the people. And so when we're not open, they wander the streets, or go to the library, or try to find somebody to let them come in. But especially in the winter or the heat of the summer, that's really tough for people. Once we get a new site, the shelter will open still 9:00 to 7:00, 9:00 AM to 7:00 AM. The day center would be open seven days a week and on holidays. We have not set the exact times for those, because we don't want it at 24/7 between the shelter and the day center, because we don't want people to not want to move out of homelessness, but we want it to be less difficult for them than it is now. So we don't know exactly what hours we will have at that point. All three entities will be staffed primarily by volunteers. Welcome Central is staffed totally by volunteers. The shelter is staffed almost totally by volunteers, and then the day center will be too. People of Leavenworth have stepped up unbelievably to meet those needs, which is a real credit, I think, to Leavenworth, a real credit. We will share some of the bathroom space and storage space. This is just kind of a diagram that looks at what, how it might look. There's a second stone in this, but it gives you an idea that the three things we see as a way to get it in place. At the day center, we will have showers and laundry facilities for the folks. And our guests will have to earn tickets to do that, because it's not just a given, you know. They can earn tickets if they have a job, that would be an automatic ticket. If they have, are taking a class, or if they're in school, take a class at Welcome Central, or help clean, you know, anything like that would help them get the ticket so that they have the opportunity, but it's not just a given. At Welcome Central, we'll try to work more on the skills to help them move out of poverty, building some of the, you know, nutrition things and job skills, different things that'll help them get that job. And then spend more time with them trying to get that job. It's not easy to get those jobs. We've worked with a lot of people, and we know that somebody has to be with them a little more to get them through that, and some of their skills, too. Both Welcome Central and the Leavenworth Interface Shelter of Hope have operated in the black since we opened, and the financing from both comes from grants and donations. Again, I cannot say enough to say that Leavenworth is a very generous town, and that's been wonderful. I've worked a lot of places that aren't as generous as Leavenworth. Also worked a lot of places where you haven't had the cooperation between agencies, between the police force, the community center. This is an unbelievable place. We do have the financing to get started, so once we get land, we can start breaking ground on the building fairly soon. We feel it's a need that's there. We feel the city would be better off because of it, and we feel for sure the homeless would be better off because of it. And so that's why we're looking for some land to try to get this one building to house the three things.
Sister, I've got a couple quick questions. Your new building, your proposed building at Third and Kyowa, is there enough parking? Because I know you've got to have parking available for X number of people and employees besides the building that you want.
We've looked at some of that. We haven't looked at it in detail until we, you know, know exactly where we're going to be. We don't really require very much parking, because most of the people who come to us don't have cars. We have, you know, two volunteers at a time that are there that would have cars, but, so we don't, our parking is not probably as great a need as some places. And it's one of the things the city have talked to us about, and we'll work with it. We don't know exactly what that will be at this point.
Okay. The other thing is, the school immediately behind St. Joseph on Old Sage, is that currently being used for anywhere, anything, do you know?
Yes.
And it is being used?
We did check on that, and yes.
Because I thought that would be an ideal center, and you could move in almost immediately.
That was our first...
We think you already checked on that.
That's all I have here.
Now, the building, it'll be on basically one level? Will it be on a slab?
Yes.
What about...
I presume you're talking to somebody that knows nothing about that.
Tornado? What about tornadoes in that?
We really talked a little bit about that, and they said what they could do, and again, you're talking to somebody that knows nothing about buildings, but that if we reinforce the bathroom and storage area, that that would work.
Sure.
Safer.
So everything will be all on one floor?
Right.
That would be nice.
Right. Our volunteers will like that, too.
Yes.
Since you're talking, I think your report says 6,507,000 square feet. And the piece of property that you identified was at Third and Kyowa, which is in the northeast redevelopment zone. Are there other pieces of property that you potentially looked at?
We looked at several, and we approached the owners of one, but we didn't want to sell, so... The Third and Kyowa, at this point, is our best that we've found. We're open to looking at others if anybody can find some for us, but that was the best that we were able to find.
Are you getting any resistance from the neighborhood, from the city, from anybody about that particular piece of property?
No, but then I don't know how many people really know. The city has been wonderful. Again, your people here, and again, I've worked with folks in other...
And they handle all the planning and the zoning of it, but I don't know what the...
Yeah, they're very good here. They will really sit down with us. And when we go into the city here, what we get is, how can we help you make this work? Most cities, when you go in, is how can we keep you from making it work?
In our packet, there was a letter from Main Street, and I think that you probably provided that, and they spoke against having it in the downtown area.
Right.
And are they, as you understand it, they didn't specifically cite anything about Third and Kyowa, did they?
No.
Or is anyone here from Main Street? A lot of people here, I'm sure they're all...
I don't see it from Main Street.
Oh, there's Wendy. I thought everybody's here for the ultraviolet lamp. It was stunning, I thought. And so I'm, and I understand, and there is a need, and we need to hear from what other points are, because it may be a good location. That's, so you're looking for a donation of that property, obviously?
Right.
Because the city does, of course you...
Yeah, it's fairly near the current...
I like the fact that it's near Catholic Charities, it's near Riverside Resources, the high rises.
It's right near the courts, and we're close to the high rises.
Right, and the St. Vincent, Lenning is not too far.
Yeah, that's why we need to...
And the Alliance is not too far.
Yeah.
Have you looked at that lot immediately west of the, of Third and Kyowa? It's a vacant lot.
West is, so...
Towards St. Joe. St. Joseph.
Way from the river. West is way from the river.
Way from the river, yeah.
Or behind that lot.
Behind it.
Behind it.
The city owns Third and Kyowa.
Right.
But I'm talking about the lot immediately west, to give you additional space if you ran into it.
We have talked with the owners of that. They didn't want to sell all of it, but we're thinking they might be willing to sell one, maybe. No, we have not asked them that.
Okay.
But yes, we did, now that I know where west is.
Okay.
North is in front of me, south is behind me.
Mayor, I'd like to give you just a couple notes on that property, just so the public knows. There is currently a special use permit issued by the city on that property for parking for Riverside Resources. So something would have to work out, not that they couldn't happen, but I'd like to point that out. And then also preliminarily, based on the use and our zoning regulations and the square footage, our requirement, staff's requirement, would be about 25 parking places. I know that this particular use may not have 25 cars that come, but we have to look at the long-term use of the building. Should they sell it, something else come in, it would be a non-conforming use, it wouldn't have the parking. So it could come for variance, but 25 is the number based on some rough estimates aside.
That's what I was assuming, it would be more, and I knew we have ordinances on us, so I was questioning that additional lot, so...
Are you saying they require that many?
It would be required 25 spots based on the square footage and the use.
Okay, but they wouldn't have to use that parking, you could...
What, what's the size of the lot? Was it .28 acres?
Right.
So call it 11,000, 12,000 square feet, and your footprint of your building is going to be called 7,000. And so you're going to have 4,500, is that, if 4,500 square feet enough to put in 25?
You'd have to count at your setbacks.
Yeah, and all, putting all that, I'm wondering if it's big enough.
Yeah.
I'm not thinking it would be, because you're, you're going to have a...
You would probably need a little...
7,000 square foot footprint on your building, and then you have your setbacks. I don't know that you have enough parking.
You'd have to look at all that to do it.
Yeah.
Is any other questions?
Actually, yeah, I've got one other question. If I could get Chief Kitchens?
Yes, sir.
Just had a quick question.
Sorry, sir, we were having a little parking debate back there.
My car better not be done.
Moving this from downtown into a residential area, do you foresee any problems that you may have with, when the shelter's not open, for instance, in residential neighborhood, with trespassing, loitering? Any of these ideas or situations occur?
The question is, do I foresee a problem? I would anticipate an increase in those kinds of calls for service, but whether or not we would describe that as a problem or not, I would have to sort of wait and see. If it's a lot, then it would be something that would create a problem. If it's not a lot, then, you know, it's not something that we don't handle every day anyway. That is sort of a wait-and-see thing, but I do, I do think about those things.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. I'm curious about that, thank you.
If we do the day center, there would be a place for them to be.
Correct, correct.
More freely, which would help.
The one thing that you have to worry about is, the population is going to grow, because once people find out that you have such a, a nice center with all the amenities, they're going to be camping on your front door, I'm afraid.
They may, although we've been surprised that it hasn't gone up, you know? We, we really expected it. We got really panicky when winter was coming. Because we thought, oh, you know, we're at 15 now, we're going to go to 30. And so we made all these arrangements on how we could, you know, get more beds in, et cetera.
I think people are already here, and I don't think you're going to see a lot of them come in from out of town.
And we have a number of people who still choose, that are homeless, that choose not to come.
Sure, sure. You're always going to have, you know, a small percentage of those, yes.
Well, I'd like to see some support for the sisters.
I agree, I agree.
Either looking for an additional, additional ground that's close to that area, or, you know, seeing if they could get a lot split on a lot behind them, which would give them enough, enough, and then we have to talk with Riverside Resources, so we don't get them all upset, so.
Right. And we said, if we did really disturb them, we need to take the responsibility to help them find the parking and create something. Because we're going to have to be doing major fundraising for this anyways.
Right, right, I understand.
You're going to need to put that in, because they do great stuff, too.
Well, I can see that you definitely have neighborhood support, so this would have to come to a regular meeting, but out of all rush.
The question may be, is city-owned land, does it have to go out to bid? Can we just give it away? We can.
Yeah.
If we determine that it's for the public good, the city commission has the right to do that, so.
Right, but that has to be done during a regular meeting.
Right.
So maybe, maybe by the end of the month, we even have an answer, do you think?
Yeah, I think we would all want to be contingent upon some, some building design.
Right.
If that's the direction we want to go, we probably need to go to the next step, and we probably need to figure out, that involves, we'll work with Sister Vicki on getting the DRC and working on layout.
That'd be great, and then when you're ready, just bring it back.
And see if we need to come to you for a variance on anything, and see how successful they are in acquiring additional properties should it not fit.
Okay.
We can move forward now, if we have the consensus of the commission to sort of further explore that site and move forward with the idea that...
Is there a consensus?
Ms. Mayor, I'm just wondering, I know a lot of people here, I'm guessing most of them are in support, are there any people here that have contrarian view on it?
I have neighbors running from the neighborhood, might have something to say.
If not, no, then I say let's, let's keep, keep moving on it.
I'd be very happy to move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I think Sister Vicki has just done an amazing job over the last couple of years organizing this community. To have this many churches together, working on one project is really great.
For those that are in attendance, you're more than welcome to stay for the next agenda item. If you want to leave, we'll give you a chance.
Right, we're working on it.
We're working on that.
Yes, we're marking, now we're marking.
Thank you guys for the ladies. All of them. Thank you. You got a liking, jumping out there.
Very nice.
Bye.
Yeah, liked it. Good seeing you.
That's good, Larry.
If I knew, when I said that, I would have gone to you.
I guess I should have just called for a break. Yeah. We're going to have to look at that. I think that's my chance.
There's Wendy from Main Street, she just got through us, if anybody hears Main Street, she's sitting right there.
Okay, our next agenda item is the 2016 Police Department tow policy.
Police chief to work his way back up.
Sorry, Mayor Dedeky, there may be a, there's about 10 or 12 people here outside, they can come in for the towing line.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Transition is slower than...
Let's hold on here.
Okay.
I got called for jury duty for the first time in my life.
Really?
And man, I can't wait. I've always wanted to be on it. I don't know.
Oh, man, I've been called so many times.
No, May 2nd, you know, for all I know, I'd call and they would cancel it.
Traffic's small, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm 65 years old, and the first one I've ever had, I've always wanted to be on it. And I hope they don't kick me out.
My sister was called to federal court on a case that I was on.
Oh, yeah, she got kicked out, well, obviously, yeah.
Oh, well, yeah. That'd be cute.
It's reasonable, yeah.
Okay, looks like you're in.
I think I said, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the police department's before the governing body is seating to discuss and review with you our existing policy that governs our relationship with tow companies. To sort of frame the conversation, for many, many years, as for as long as police departments have been in existence, we have called upon the services of tow companies to deal with our sort of day-to-day routine stuff. For many years, the Leavenworth Police Department has had relationships, I want to say about 15 years ago, it's been that long, you know, don't hold me to that specifically, we adopted a series of rules that sort of govern whether someone can participate in our tow system. We did that because there was quite a bit of sort of back and forth between the tow companies. They're all different now, it was Rick's Record Service and A or T back then, but they're different companies. Those rules are included in the policy report for you to review, and those have been in existence, again, for about 15 years, and we've maintained that. The four companies that currently are authorized on the tow list are included in the policy report as well. Towriffic Towing, Mans Collision Center, Main Street Towing from Leavenworth, and Express Tow, Platte City, out of Platte City, Missouri. In the, in the course of this situation, I have received one additional application to participate in, in the tow list, and I have put that on hold pending the outcome of the discussion. And that is Logan Auto Repair, which is based out of Easton, Kansas. For me, as a police department, there are really three critical elements to this entire structure. That is that they be available to respond 24 hours a day. That's obviously important to us. That the response times are reasonable, we have outlined 20 minutes or 30 minutes in the case of bad weather. And then for me, in particular, and I recall the last time that we went through this, the establishment of requiring the tow companies to have a local lot in town. For example, if you're involved in an accident or mechanical problems, and you need your vehicle towed, we didn't want the person from Leavenworth to have to go somewhere else in some extreme 45-minute drive to get their car back. So if they wanted to participate, that is one of the requirements that we've held pretty steady about. The current system is structured as follows. All of the tow companies are rotated on a seven-day basis. So from midnight on Saturday to midnight the following Saturday, the company is what we call the wrecker of the week. If the police department needs the services of a tow company, we call the wrecker of the week, and they come out, and it depends on the luck of the draw, sometimes we're busy, sometimes we're not busy, you get what you get. There are some things to understand that does not apply to every situation. If you have USAA as your insurance company, for example, and you have a mechanical problem, or you say, I'm going to call USAA's 1-800 number, they're going to send a wrecker. That doesn't have any, any relationship to us. Or if you are familiar with somebody that you deal with all the time, and you specifically say, I'd like Main Street, or I'd like Towriffic, you can specifically request a tow, and we will call it for you. Every year, for the last two years at least, I went back and looked, we've towed over 500 cars, it's something that we deal with quite a bit. While we're here tonight, earlier this year, I received the application from the company that was based out of Platte City, Missouri. They met all the criteria for approval, and I authorized them. They're based out of Platte City, but they apparently reached a business relationship with a local company, Car Star, at Third and Choctaw, to be their lot in town. And so that's how they were going to meet their criteria. And I think that's changed since, since then, but we don't require them to do certain things, however they do it is however they do it. And so in that particular case, that met the criteria as far as I was concerned, and they were approved, and they've been so. That caused a little stir amongst both the local companies and the folks on the list. And so as a result of that, I held a meeting at the police department on February 23rd. I heard all of the complaints. I think all of the representatives from the companies are here and can speak for themselves, but then my general assessment of that is that the two local companies, Towriffic and Mans Collision, specifically asked for the city to consider changing its policy and make it specific to the city of Leavenworth. The gentleman from Main Street Tow, out of Lansing, Kansas, expressed concern about a company from Missouri and things like taxes from Kansas and Missouri. I will be honest, I didn't take that into consideration in my decision, I just applied the rules that we have in place to determine whether they were authorized, and, you know, I did not give that consideration. So that's how we ended up here tonight, I think they reached out to at least Mayor Dedeky, and they may have reached out to some of you. Again, I've, I've received another application, which I have put on hold. There's some other things in the meantime that have changed as well, and so to be fair to the process, I understand in my conversations with Express Tow and Logan Towing, they at least have arrangements to open up a local lot here in town. Express Tow is the building at Third and Seneca Street, there's a small little building there with a fenced-in lot. And then Logan Towing has acquired, either through lease or ownership, the building that used to be AART Tow, which is just south of Leavenworth Paper Supply on Second Street. So I think they're sort of waiting for the outcome of this, this meeting tonight and consensus from the governing body about how to proceed, whether they're going to open up an office, or whether that would, you know, that would meet the requirements for a lot. There's also one other caveat that's important, that the city of Leavenworth needs to be able to retain the right to call independently of this for things like a school bus, a concrete truck, some heavy piece of equipment. Some of the companies do not have the ability, nor do they have the desire to deal with that. We need to be able to do that, you know, independent of any of this. And that's, that's a sort of secondary part, but important, I know that the service center has quite a few, quite a few pieces of heavy equipment, and they've used Express Tow from, from, from time to time to deal with those kinds of things. And so the budget impact, there's no budget impact with the city of Leavenworth, we've received no proceeds at all, there's no payment exchanged at all, whatever fines or tow or storage is done between the tow company and the person that owns the vehicle, that is handled separately, we receive no benefit. But I do recognize there's business impact, given that we do more than 500 toes a year, you know, pretty consistently. So we're here tonight to discuss with you whether or not you want to entertain making any changes to the rules, you want me to consider just going as business as usual, like we have been, and I play head referee, change and make ordinance, change the rules, put some limitations on it, perhaps the city of Leavenworth, the state of Kansas, Leavenworth County, whatever you do, it's ultimately your decision, this is a policy decision, there's no law that governs anything like this, whatever you'd like to do is, is an option on the table. And so I'll do my best to answer whatever questions. Again, I think everybody that is either representative currently on the tow list or made application is here, if you want to entertain questions or comments from them.
Any questions of the...
We just said you do over 500 toes a year. If we, just an example, if we only allowed tow services that were located in Leavenworth and Lansing, I guess you had three currently right now, would that have any impact as far as not having service for accidents or waiting time, or?
No, sir, those numbers probably are reflective of the fact that for a few years we've had three, generally. Now, companies kind of come and go, but I would tell you, over the course of my time, it's been about two or three companies that we've used. One is not enough, I would argue that.
Right, right.
Two is sufficient, beyond that, it's really up to us.
Okay, so three would be plenty to get the job done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, one would be plenty to get the job done, in theory, because they'd just be on call 52 weeks a year, rather than, it's not, you know, one would be, in theory, they're just on call 24/7, 365.
I would argue Commissioner, one is not enough, because of the volume.
Yeah.
But if you say one, we do the best we can.
Well, because from week to week, only one's on call.
Right. Now...
But if you have special things, obviously, call other ones, but on, on the regular, using your example, you've got, you run a duty roster, runs from midnight Sunday morning till 11:59 Saturday night.
Right.
And towing company A, you're on duty this week.
Right.
Next week, towing company B.
Right.
But if there's only one towing company, they're just on seven days a week. I'm using that argument, obviously, if you have a bus or something else, you have to do other things, but for regular accidents, one would suffice, and, you know, carrying this argument all the way out.
Let me make one...
And I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying that...
And let me, let me say one thing about that, that's more art than it is science, okay? Because we're busy. Last night, we had a case in which there was a car accident involving four cars. Sometimes, sometimes like the tow company on duty is busy doing something else, and we call, and we can wait, sometimes we can wait, but sometimes we don't.
No, I understand.
So, so there are rules, there are guidelines, but it's closer to art than it is science.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You're an awful lot, so we try our best we can to juggle it.
Yeah, and I'm being very simplistic, saying you just get by with one, but it, but by having the duty roster, basically, one's on call, and then there's special events that happen that you have to call on the other ones. On response time, you want 20, 30 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes if we're in a blizzard or something. Now, the company out of Platte City and the one out of Easton, they have secured lots here, that's where they're going to tow the car to, do they have staff sitting there 24/7 when they're on duty? Because I can't, you're not going to get a tow truck from Platte City, Missouri to Fourth and Eisenhower in 20 minutes, anytime, and...
The question is bifurcated, are they going to have staff on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week? But nobody does, that's not what they do.
Right.
Right, that's the tow service at night, whatever they call, then they're happy to do that. My experience is in dealing with the tow companies, because that was one of the complaints, oh, well, if they're in Platte City, they're not going to get here in time, okay? So we pay particular attention to that, at least in the initial phases, to make certain. I spoke specifically with my supervisors, and in particular, the midnight supervisors, how are they doing, are they meeting their requirements? And so far, they are, so far, they are.
Okay, oh, then that answers the question.
Right. And I, and I assure you, if they are not, the other companies will tell me about it.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm, I'm a bit of a competitive business, I just have the feeling it may be competitive.
I don't understand. Okay, so they, they have an office here, do they have staffing here that goes out on the calls here?
Probably during the daytime they would do, but I think most tow companies, and they would probably speak better to this, the tow company, the guy that runs the tow truck takes the tow truck home, and so there's a 2:00 in the morning call, we call, and they dispatch them, and...
So they are coming from Platte City, then?
Oh, yeah.
But they are, they're, according to your, your staff, you know, I don't care if they're coming from St. Louis, they end up here in 20 minutes if they meet the needs, you don't have a complaint about their service.
So far, I do not, they're relatively new at it, so far.
Okay, and if you do, obviously, you take action.
Right.
And they have lots here, and the lot is just a place where you can take the wrecked car that's secure, and then the insurance company or the owner can go in the next couple of days and say, what do I need to get this out? I know you don't get into pricing, but have there been any complaints from citizens saying, I've had my car towed twice in the last six months, one guy charged me $75, the other
Probably during the daytime they would do, but I think most tow companies, and they would probably speak better to this, the tow company, the guy that runs the tow truck takes the tow truck home. And so there's a two o'clock in the morning call, we call and they dispatch them and-
So they are coming from Platte City then?
But they are, they're, according to your staff, you know, I don't care if they're coming from St. Louis, they end up here in twenty minutes if they meet the needs. You don't have a complaint about their service.
So far, I do not. They're relatively new at it.
Okay, and if you do, obviously you'll take action. And they have lots here, and the lot is just a place where you can take the wrecked car that's secure, and then the insurance company or the owner can go in the next couple of days and say, "What do I need to get this out?" I know you don't get into pricing, but have there been any complaints from citizens saying, "I've had my car towed twice in the last six months. One guy charged me seventy-five dollars, the other guy charged me two-seventy-five." Or do you even hear those things? Is that an issue?
Right, the complaints that I hear about that are this, that it's closer to three hundred dollars.
Okay, I don't know.
Which the police department calls. Now, the issue would be, we don't particularly get too concerned about that because we do require them to respond. And so essentially, whatever it is that they're doing is not as important as what we're doing, and so when we say, "We're calling you, you need to get here." And so as a result of that, in exchange for that, they're able to charge a little bit.
Sure, I understand.
And so we don't really get into that. It would require, that would probably require the governing body to say, "I want you to put some sort of cap on it."
I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna do that.
Right, right, right.
Now, our ordinance and our rules have been, they must maintain a lot in the city. So when their car, when the vehicle gets towed, they can go somewhere within the confines of the city of Leavenworth to go get their car. They don't have to go to Lansing, Baser, Platte City, Eastern, Kansas City, Missouri, or anything else. And now the thought is, you know, where are they, where is their business headquartered? I don't know. I don't wanna get into that. I mean, I don't wanna say I can't have a burger, I don't want this burger shop in town because they're headquartered out of Abilene or something like that. As long as they're serving burgers and they're fresh burgers. I don't know, that's kind of stretching it here, but I don't know. But I can also see the concern of the towing companies. There's a lot more competition now. More people want a piece of the action. And I don't know.
Yes, that's it too.
Okay, one thing. This is not an ordinance. This is just rules. There are no ordinances that government-
This is your policy.
We came up with fifteen years ago, just to kind of set that a little bit. It's not an order, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I have.
You asked us to just consider and discuss, are there any issues with the way things are being done now?
Occasionally, I sort of referee a little bit. In the grand scheme of things, over the last, you know, eight years I've been the chief and before that the deputy chief, it just really goes along pretty well. There's the occasional little bit of problem, but it's functioning pretty well generally.
But in those years, I don't think, Pat, you've had this number of tow companies.
Right. We were trying to sort of sort that out, and I think probably three is about the most that we've had. If I remember, there may have been times where it was more than that, but right, we're creeping up on more than we've ever had.
This'll make it up to five, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, we are a capitalistic society, so I don't have any problem-
Well, if they wanna make the investment and say you can make it, make a goal, that's fine if they can. That's fine, too.
I don't see where we should-
Does the police chief have the authority, or can we give the police chief authority? Let's say, let's say there's five in the mix right now, and let's say next week, three more come in. Can the police chief say, "I'm not taking any applications. I got enough. I don't need any more." I mean, are, do you feel like you're, if ten people, ten more show up, we'd have fifteen towing companies?
I can do that. I mean, I'd be glad to do that. You know, the chief has been, you know, held this responsibility for many, many years, sort of.
I'd like you to keep.
Yeah, really, I don't wanna be-
I don't know if I wanna be Solomon on this.
Right. Generally speaking, I've resolved most disputes. I can think maybe a time, maybe once that I talked to Mr. Miller in consultation, and I said, "Here's what happened. Here's what I'm gonna do, and we can, I think we agree." It's very rare. I generally, you know, sort of sort all this stuff out on a day-to-day basis. The system is working fairly well. But I feel like that the two local businesses specifically said, "We want the city to make this consideration." So I felt like that was something that is slightly above my pay grade and probably belongs right here for you to decide if you chose to do that.
I disagree with Mark on the part of, not the licensing so much, but that office or base, and that could be the building that they, that's on the lot with their storage. But my concern is, as always, is the taxes. We've got a Missouri company. Are they charging Kansas taxes? Do they charge a Missouri taxes? My assumption would be Missouri, because that's where they're set up and headquartered at. I think they should be an authorized business in the state of Kansas, and this goes for all of them, and be able to supply a lot and an office.
I have to agree. That was the thing. That's why I went back to how many tow trucks. I'm all for including all the local tow truck services in here in the loop, so every company has a fair share at getting a tow truck or a tow of the week. But with this many tow trucks and other companies out there on the Platte City side and everywhere, I think we're spreading it a little thin and in areas we don't need to spread the wealth, if you wanna say it that way, over to our neighbors. I would like to keep that with local tow services if at all possible. That's just my opinion of it.
But didn't you say Express Tow is one that handles larger equipment than some of the others can?
Right, Express Tow is the one company, unless circumstances have changed, that I am actually aware can handle a concrete truck, a school bus.
But we can still contact them. For instance, if you, I'm just gonna give an example. If we have Towriffic and Mans in Maine, and only three we're gonna be using, and you still come across a situation where there's something that they can't handle, we still have another tow truck services that we can call and bring in and handle that situation.
Right, and that, whether it's Express Tow or not, we reserve the right to call somebody else.
Yes, yeah.
Even if they're not open.
That's my point. Right, okay, thank you.
These last two, Express and Logan, Logan's in Easton, have they already opened up lots at Third and Seneca and next to Leavenworth Paper Supply on South Second?
Can I defer that to them?
Are you using them right now? I'm asking.
The first one that's on the list now, yes, they are required to use the local lot. The other one, their application is pending. I haven't approved them yet, so I think that's-
And that's the one out of Easton?
That's Logan out of Easton.
Okay, but, and I don't disagree with what the mayor's saying and Commissioner Rainey, you know, like keeping the businesses here. But it seems, unless I'm mistaken, Express may have worked within the letter of the law or the letter of the agreement, and now we're pulling the rug out from under them. And if we'd go that way, I can see, you know, from a point forward, we do something, but if they complied with, you know, here are the rules, okay, we're gonna set up here, we make our investment here, we contract for a lot, et cetera. I mean, they played by the rules and now we're changing the rules. And I don't have an answer, but you know, that does concern me. But you know, definitely from this point forward, I think that, you know, you bring something to us, kind of knowing what our temperature is on this, on something that you think that we'd go with from this point forward. But it does concern me that we change the rules on somebody after they've made the investment, whether it be marketing the research, getting the lot, et cetera.
The, as Pat said, it was policy, and it's been designed fourteen, fifteen years ago. But I think if you need to change policy, you need to change policy.
Yeah.
And I think we need to change it to what I suggested, but that's entirely up to you.
I think we need to see if they already are doing that. You know, I don't know.
Is there anybody here from Express?
Yes, yes, know how you're incorporated.
Need your name and your address, please.
Jeff Asher with Main Street Tow. I have no problem with Logan's or Express coming on, as long as they abide by everything, local laws, state laws, taxes. My question is, we towed six vehicles for Leavenworth Police Department the other day, all at one time, and that's a good example of why we need more one tow service. They called for six wrecks all at once. Why did Express tow their two vehicles to Platte City?
Oh, they-
I've got receipts here where they towed them to Platte City.
They were supposed to keep-
I talked to Jeff this morning about that. He called and expressed a concern. Remember I said they sort of police themselves and make sure? I talked to the gentleman from Express Tow. He is here. My understanding is that, given the unique nature of that, that's not something that we do, for a variety of reasons, two of which were there were significant code enforcement violations and parking violations. So we intentionally went out to remove vehicles that had been a chronic neighborhood problem. That is unique. That's not something that we do every day. My understanding from the gentleman from Express Tow, he can hear, he's here to speak differently, is that when he was out there, he talked to the gentleman and offered an option of taking it to Platte City, being cheaper, and that gentleman chose to take that option and went that day and picked up those cars. But remember what I said, art not science. We do our best and, you know, occasionally-
So the consumer-
In this case, according to the gentleman-
The consumer said, "Take me to Platte City."
I don't like that idea.
I spoke to the customer, and he didn't, he was upset that he had to go to Platte City to pick the vehicles up. His name was Brian Mullins. He lives at seven forty Chestnut, Leavenworth. He was upset that he had to go to Platte City.
Is there a gentleman from Express Tow here? Would you like to respond?
Ah, we spoke to him.
I need a name and an address, please.
Luke Davis, six oh four First Street, Platte City. We spoke to him at the scene, as well as Sergeant Cyril, and offered to, either we could take it to our lot in Leavenworth, where we would charge him storage, or take it to our lot in Platte City, because he said he was gonna come pick up that day at a reduced rate because we have more room over there. And they were older cars. He was not concerned with it at the time. His wife was in fact recording the whole thing from start to finish with the police department.
Say that again. His wife went?
His wife was recording the whole thing.
Oh, so it's-
Yeah, from the get-go, before, long before we got there. But a few things on another note that I, you know, kind of consider. We talked to the police department about the rules and met all the rules, signed a lease on a lot and a building here in town, and actually been speaking with the guy that owns it about purchasing it, trying to get in town. The reason we've kind of backed off is because we have been kind of given the cold shoulder and not a real warm welcome from other tow companies. So we're kind of waiting to see what happened here. But as far as, right now, you've only got two tow companies even federally able to operate twenty-four hours a day. Mans Collision has one, Main Street has two drivers. It takes four drivers to staff a twenty-four-seven tow company by federal law. So a lot of that can be taken into consideration possibly. We've got ten drivers, twelve trucks, to address the concerns about if there's somebody stationed at a certain place in Leavenworth, no. But with that kind of trucks, we've got trucks everywhere. We cover Atchison, Jefferson, and Brown County for AAA, and in Leavenworth for GEICO, we're the sole provider for GEICO Insurance. Several other insurance companies, we've got trucks, not stationed at one point in time, but all over the area. We've run a hundred and twenty-five calls in the last forty-eight hours. So that leaves a lot of trucks open, you know, moving about the area. You guys got any other questions for me?
I don't.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Obviously, this is a bit more complex.
Yeah.
On the service, it seemed relatively simple, but it's more complex. I'm wondering if we can have the chief sit down with his staff, maybe one member of the commission. I know one member of the commission who knows quite a bit about auto towing, sit in on it and maybe come back with some type of solution. I mean, work with these guys and figure it out. You know, someone may lose, and that's life. We know that. But I don't know that we can solve this tonight. I'd like to see, I know you gave us the facts, and it's kind of been your policy. Now you're throwing an arc word, saying, "Hey, bail me out of this one." I don't think you're quite saying that, but I'm saying, why don't you, you know, I wonder if you guys sit down and maybe a member of the commission, I'm thinking specifically Mayor Dedeky, because he knows a lot about this business, that can see if this thing can be worked out and come back to us. I'm not, because of my knowledge level on this, I'm not very comfortable in coming up with a solution, because every, I throw out a question, somebody counters it, so I don't know what I'm talking about. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
I'd be agreeable to that, as long as we, the one thing that I have, I know that Logan's has met all the requirements as of today, as long as we can get him activated and get him on the list, because this may take another two or three weeks to rectify, so that way all five people are on the list.
Yeah, no, whatever, I mean, you understand, you know this stuff, you know, this is your wheelhouse. And I don't wanna volunteer you for anything.
Yeah.
I just did.
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea, too. I agree with Mark. I mean, Commissioner pricing.
I don't know if you wanna set it up, Pat.
Just so I'm clear, the folks that have applied, you want me to process, and as long as I can verify that they meet the requirements, that being the current requirements, a lot in town, and, you know, meet all the other requirements, you're okay with me approving that?
Get them on the list.
Okay. Before we make that decision, let me ask this question. Would you anticipate significant changes? I would hate to do that, and then two weeks later, we come up with something alternative to that and then have to tell them no?
I don't know.
Okay.
As long as we can get everybody that's agreeable and we can, there's a few other bases I'd like to touch, but-
I am one hundred percent certain we are not gonna reach that level, so.
Well, we're gonna make an effort.
Ninety-four percent is probably about okay again. But I will process the current application and then set up a time for everybody to get together and see if we come up with a little bit better tweaking in the system.
And no fighting, guys, no fighting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, that takes care of our agenda. Has anybody else got anything? Paul, you have anything?
Anybody?
I have one other thing I gotta bring up. As far as we were concerned with the tax, we have become a, or it's a foreign-based LLC, operating, registered in Kansas.
Okay, that's-
And our trucks are licensed as a portion of vehicles, which is where, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it's where at the end of the year, a portion of what miles was driven in each state is paid to that state.
Okay.
And as far as the tax, it's a tow service is all labor, so there's minimal tax on that.
One question.
But Kansas does charge tax.
If the company that you're representing stays in the loop on this, would it bother you or would there be a problem, would there be a clause where you pick up cars that in Leavenworth or in, you know, our county, that they stay and cannot be transportable or into Missouri?
No, that's how basically all it is unless the owner was aware of where it's going. Any wrecked vehicles, we own a body shop as well in Platte City. All the wrecked vehicles that we pick up here, unless the owner wants them taken somewhere else, go to Carstar.
Okay.
So that money is staying in town.
Okay.
And we own the body shop and not even trying to bring them back to our shop.
Okay.
So I think that was, you know, fair to bring them and leave them over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no additional business, we are adjourned.